Good evening and welcome to the South St. Paul's School Board Virtual Meeting, Monday, December 14th, 2020. Lisa, would you please take the role?
Inspector Diaz?
Here.
Inspector Bjorkland?
Here.
Inspector Walker?
Here.
Inspector Lollberti?
Here.
Inspector Aaron?
Here.
Inspector Felton?
Here.
Chair McClellan?
Here.
At seven present, it's 6:02.
Thank you. First on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda and minutes for the agenda for December 14th, 2020, the meeting minutes for December, for November 23rd, 2020, and the meeting minutes for December 7th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Lisa, would you take the role?
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorkland?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lollberti?
Yes.
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
At seven eight?
Thank you. That is approved. First, tonight in our quality in action, we have Chad Sexhour with all activities and activity update. Chad, take it away.
Thank you, Board Chair McClellan and other South St. Paul School Board members and Dr. Webb for having me here this evening to kind of talk a little bit about our quality in action for the fall that we lived just this past, past couple months. Just like the school year, right? Absolutely unique year in terms of activities and events for us here at school, but much needed. And I need to say thank you for allowing us to, to partake and to really kind of serve some needs for our kids in a, in a so- social emotional capacity outside of our, our learning day. As always, our program is not just about one big performance and one Friday night or, or one Thursday event. It's, it's really about why we play and trying to take away a bunch of items, right, related to character education and growth as individuals and just sheer passions that kids and families have. And so being able to be together in the fall in, in a capacity and kind of show concern for one another and practice protocols and safety was, was great. And I couldn't have done it without a great advisors, outstanding coaches. It, it took truly a whole community to be able to pull off the things that we accomplished this, this fall. So Lisa, if you click ahead a, a screen for me there, please. This fall, our, we had four girls that were recognized as all-conference off of our girls tennis team. Lauren Bauer, Emma Chaney, Madison Cronin, Sarah Winsonson. The girls finished fourth in the conference. What's great about this group in front of you right here is they're all going to be back. Emma's a junior and the other three are sophomores. So it's a talented little group of tennis players that are coming up through the ranks. Rebecca Spragel and Pepper Meyer, our coaches, have done an outstanding job along with Dave Sunday of really growing a program. And you can see that through the work they do during the summer. When you drive down Fifth Avenue at Roosevelt Courts, you just see like 40 young kids, 50 young kids, all the way down to elementary age, up to high school kids that are there working throughout the summer. And they just did an outstanding job. And so it's exciting to be able to watch these, these fine young ladies continue to grow and they're, and have that passion. If you'd move one more slide there for me, Lisa, please. All-conference football this year, we have two young men, Colton Becker and Jalen Neiman Burnett. Both of these young men are seniors. Jalen is actually, was recognized by our district as a Defensive Player of the Year on a two and five football team. That's pretty dang good for a young man to be able to pull that off. And so it was outstanding. This fall was, was unique as a football coach, being able to not have a locker room and live out of a, a big pack facility and to try and find different ways to be able to, to build camaraderie and, and be a team and, and really practice safety and do things the way we've done it. It was a testament to our assistant coaches and our families and the kids, very resilient, but also a group that was very injury prone. I've never had a group that was as injured as this group. At one point, I think we had 10 kids that were varsity football players, not dressed for, for games and non-COVID related. It was all sorts of other things along the way. So I, I like to tell these guys, had we been able to stay healthy, it would have been interesting to see what they could have been able to, to accomplish as a group. But that is a life lesson in and of itself and just kind of taking away. This past week, last two weeks, myself and one other staff member, we've been doing our banquet. We drive to the kids' houses and deliver their awards and kind of speak to them on their front doorsteps along with their parents. So completely and totally new here in 2020. Lisa, if you'd roll ahead another screen there for us. Girl soccer, all-conference, McKenna Deering, Leanna Fremming, and Gabby Owens, three outstanding soccer players and outstanding young ladies. That McKenna Deering was also All-State. Not only is she a Division One hockey player going to Bemidji State, but she's an exceptionally talented soccer player. And these young ladies, same kind of thing, finished fourth in the conference. And McKenna's the only senior in the group. Leann and Gabby are both juniors. So another talented group that will be on the pitch next year coming back. If you'd move one more screen there, Lisa. Kevin Quake of Adina is our all-conference boys soccer player. Has been a goalie for the last three years. Just an outstanding young kid, super resilient in the nets. There were times this year where he probably saw 40-plus shots and was super positive all the way throughout. The boys finished, I think, with the record of like three and nine and had some really outstanding matches, kind of found their stride at the end of the season and went on a little run there, winning like three or four games on the back end of their season. And Kevin, the, the all-conference soccer player was lucky enough, we had like three kids that, as soccer season was finalizing, football season was kind of ramping up. So we had three soccer players that were able to come out and play football this year. And I think we had like three or four football players that were able to fill a soccer season. So in this unique times, kids were finding ways to, to do things that had never been done before and was, was outstanding. Lisa, if you'd move ahead one for me. Over at Central Square in our, our pool, in, in our diving well, we have this young lady, Grace Curtin, who set all sorts of records, not only in South St. Paul, but for the conference as the highest point total for a diver, school history, but also in conference history. Grace is a junior and probably had there been a state meet this year, would have finished in the top four, if not number one in the state as a diver. Just exceptional, is, is continuing to grow. This was another team with a lot of young ladies, not much in the way of senior bodies. Claire Shannon was a captain who sorely be missed. But other than that, I think she was our only senior. So we have some, some young teams that are coming back that are going to be, we're going to be looking for great things coming out of this 2020 COVID year. And then our, our last piece, there, Lisa, if you'd move ahead for me, relates to our, our theater for the fall. And that was the Big Bad Musical. I hope many of you got to be outside over at Central Square in the Ampli Theater to take part in a very interactive play where you got, the audience got to kind of decide the outcome for those, for those, that performance. But we had a couple students in different roles in terms of choreographer with Emma and Elise and Molly in those roles and some lead actors with Marissa and Steven and Molly. And just behind the scenes, I mean, Eric has developed a, a well-rounded program. So it's not just those that are up on stage. It's also kids that are behind the scenes, instructing, teaching, a big part of the performance. Eric and I spent some time trying to find ways to, in venues to get this, as many people, right, just like in sports, to try and have people outside and at the events and, and not just being in the auditorium. And we looked at Eddinger Field and we looked at North Practice Field and we looked at the Ampli Theater. And I know he was really excited to be able to get outside and utilize that space. So the performance days were glorious weather. I think Sunday maybe got a little windy, but other than that, it was a really nice opportunity, great for the kids to be outside every day and practicing in that space and, and really making it work for themselves. So this kind of summarizes our, our fall quality in action items. We are, just like the rest of Minnesota, waiting for the governor's announcement on Wednesday to find out where we will be moving for the winter. If we, we'll start practice on Monday, the 21st. And if the green light has been given, we have a, a plan in place and are ready to roll that way. Or if we're in another two to four week pause and we're ready for those actions as well. Our coaches and advisors have been meeting with kids all along these past couple weeks virtually and talking about character education and, and virtual coaching and advising and leading workouts on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. Just doing some quality work with our kids beyond the scope of the regular school day. So that's a little bit from the activities department. And thank you.
Any comments or questions for Chad?
Yeah, Jeff, I have a comment. Chad, I want to personally congratulate you on an exceptional job done this fall. I know how difficult it's been and I don't think anybody else could have done the job you did. So thanks from this board member, okay?
Thanks, Bill. It's, it's a team. I, I tell you what, Johnny Kruger is outstanding, our COVID kind of liaison and school nurse down at Capoja. And I bothered her on a lot of Saturday evenings and Sunday afternoons with phone calls with kids. And she, I just can't say how exceptional she is. She was such a, a big thing for me to kind of transition and, and work through the multitude of problems and things that were, that came at us. But it was a team. It wasn't one person, that's for sure. But thank you.
Chris Repati, have you got your mics on?
I, I have something. Thanks so much, Chad, for, for leading the way and not only taking care of our athletes and our activities, but their well-being too. And I imagine, and I just wonder, how are they? How are, how is their well-being? How are they holding up in the midst of this COVID?
You know, I would say the 250 to 325 kids that are participating are, are doing well from a standpoint of when they're with one another, you know, is, I think they realized it's not about outcomes, right? It's more about opportunities and it's about being with their friends and their peers and thankfulness and grace, you know? When I would go around to parent meetings at the, the start of the year, I just said over and over that this whole thing is about flexibility, patience and grace that the ground was going to continue to shift and move underneath us. And our, our families were super supportive. Our advisors and coaches really did have the well-being of kids, not only their physical health, but their mental health and being there to support them emotionally where they're at, taking time all throughout and just like the school day. But, you know, they just have a closer relationship in that common passion. And so my fear is for those that aren't engaged with us. And now we have other kids, right, that are rolling in. And it's just, how do we continue to, to have touches and, and meaningful support for kids in that social emotional space?
Thank you, Chad.
And I'd just like to pretty much second what everyone else has said. Just thank you for being, and all of your advisors and coaches for being flexible and creative enough to, to make this all work, you know, for the sake of the, the kids and for all the reasons that you've listed. I think it was time well spent and I just want to say thank you for, for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. I never thought I'd be assigning seating charts for buses or telling kids they have to roll the windows down when they, they get on a bus and, and thinking outside the box in terms of water bottles and, and all the different things. But everybody's continuing to find a way. And I think there's going to be things, just like in the classroom, that we hang on to. They're, they're really good and, and hopefully as parents and people get back in venues, they recognize that kids are out there for the same reason. They're just happy to be there and it's not about that, that scoreboard.
Chad, I'd like to say thank you for all you've done over the years for the football program. You will be missed.
Thanks, Jeff. I, it, I'm not going away, I don't think. It's just going to be, yeah, no, I just in a different way. And, you know, for me, this was a crazy way to, because I'm not going out, but just not to be the, the lead of the helm, to be able to kind of take some time and step back and let somebody else use their voice. And, you know, this is, I've been blessed. It's been a family thing. It's never been about one person. It's been my wife and my family and a lot of support from administrators and teachers and families. Lisa Branddecker and the Mark Duffys and the Carrie Pettas. It's, it's a bunch of groups and a bunch of people that are caring. And I'm, I'm going to still be a part of it, just don't have to be at every dang meeting and every, every event that goes on.
Right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
I had to, Jeff. Yeah, just what a great job managing the whole season, Chad. There's never been a roller coaster as, quite as steep as this year as activities director. You, you can get a couple hours before game time in any sport and find out that somebody tested positive and have to change course or have to quarantine a whole team. So just congratulations on your management of our entire program and your leadership in the district. And just when we spoke a few weeks ago, I just shared with the football program specifically, again, no one could have done it better. So hats off to you.
Thanks, Dave.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much, Chad. Next is school board recognition. Dr. Webb?
Well, good evening. So we actually have two school board members that have their last meeting with us tonight. So for those of you that are watching at home, we have both Patty McClellan, I'm sorry, Patty McClellan, we're going to come Patty Bjorkland and Jeff McClellan, or, you know, together it'd be Patty McClellan. So where'd that come from? So Jeff McClellan is our serving board chair. And Patty Bjorkland and Jeff have served our community extremely well for the past four years. So tonight, they are both stepping off the board. And every time that we have a farewell to a board member, we have a crystal apple that we use and share as a gift and a symbol for the, really the gifts and sharing that you've done here for our community. And I just have a few words today and I just wanted to take a minute and celebrate each of you. So Jeff, I'll start with you as chair. Just your focus on kids, our staff and our community has been top-notch. Your passion for equity, equity for all kids and everyone in our community is top. Some of you may not be aware, but Jeff serves not only our school board, but the Equity Alliance School Board as well, and has done an outstanding job at both for the past four years. Jeff has some special gifts. And when you look at our finance area, there's no one more passionate on our board about school finance than Jeff, really finance in general. And his knowledge base has been incredibly helpful in service to our board. One humorous side point that I would share is that Jeff is the only school board member that I've ever met that is excited to read our audit, which we are going to feed tonight and it's to be his last board meeting. So Jeff, not only we have a crystal apple for you, we have the audit tonight for you too, just in your honor. In a nutshell, just Jeff, thank you for your service, your unending four years of service and all those pesky superintendent phone calls giving you updates along the way. We salute you and we applaud you for your service to our community. So thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, thank you. Patty? So thank you, Patty, for your incredible four years of service for all of us. Your care for our community has been tremendous. What some of you may not know that are watching here tonight, excuse me, Patty has a background in teaching that she brought with her onto the school board and has been an incredible gift and perspective for our community. She has special talents that she'll be taking with her in her new position as well. And we'll talk about that in just a second. But the arts area has been a special passion for Patty. And her voice and her guidance and support in this area has helped strengthen the board in her four years of service. Patty is an inspiration to all of us. And I'm going to just give her a shout out as she begins a new career, just started a new career, went back to school, is just starting a new career just last week. So I just, I am proud of you, Patty. I'm proud of your service to the board. We are the beneficiaries and recipients of your great leadership and service. And just on behalf of our entire school district, I want to thank you, Patty Bjorkland, and you, Jeff McClellan, tonight for four years of outstanding service. Thank you. So we will have your crystal apple in the district office whenever you're in the neighborhood to grab that. And again, thank you for your service.
Thanks, Dave. Anybody else have anything to say? Do I have to turn my camera off?
Could I jump in for a minute, Jeff, and thank both you?
Absolutely.
Both you and Patty for having the fortitude to help us through these tough times. I give you both the highest grade possible. And, and I'm just, just want to say on my behalf that you're both going to be missed.
Thank you, Bill. Wendy, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd also like to add both Patty and Jeff. It's been wonderful and an honor to serve with you these last four years. And just always know, even though you won't be on our school board, you will always be my friend. You will always be in my heart. And anytime, feel free to reach out, stay in touch, and I always wish you the best. And I look forward to seeing with you and talking with you guys in the future. So thank you.
Thanks, Wendy. Nikki?
Well, we came in together, but we're not going out together, almost, two out of three. And sometimes it was a rocky ride and sometimes it was a great joy. And you both contributed to that. And I, I just want to wish you both well in your future endeavors and where your life ends up taking you. I, I wish you the best of health and to your family. And I hope you tune in every now and then maybe to a board meeting to say, oh my God, I'm so glad I'm off of that. But anyway, it, it's, it's been a ride and I do wish you the very best.
Thank you, Nikki. Linda?
Yeah, I would agree with what everybody's been saying. Thank you for taking a newbie under your wing, both of you, for different, in different ways. I don't know if I could have volunteered to be the vice chair or forced to be the vice chair without you both helping me along, helping me to understand things, really being just great leaders. So thank you and best wishes.
Thank you, Linda. Chris?
Just thank you both for so much that you've given over the past two years. I just, it's the, the value that you've both added is tremendous on the finance committee. And just in general, Patty, you're one of those people that can be in a conversation and make a point or ask a question. And I think to myself, that's a really good point. I wonder what I did. I didn't think of that. That's, that's tremendous. And Jeff, I remember early on you saying, boy, board chair, I would never want to do that job. And look at you now. So it's, it's just tremendous, the, the leadership and the, the value that you've given to this board over the years. And I want to thank you for that and just reiterate that you will be missed.
Thank you, Chris. Patty, would you like to say a few words?
I sure would. Thank you, everybody. I think going into this, I couldn't have known how much I was going to learn. I knew how much I cared about kids and I knew how much I cared about the school system. But to have claimed you all as friends and I will carry you with me. As I go up to Brainerd, we all move up to Brainerd and, and I will have stories to tell that you could imagine that maybe will end up in a couple of my sermons. But thank you for your, for your camaraderie and for your friendship. Like I say, I carry you with me in my heart always.
Thank you, Patty. I just have to say it's been an honor. I've learned, like Patty said, I've learned a lot. I do have one regret, though. Before this pandemic started, we were working on getting a student on the, on the board. So I charge all of you to take that up when things calm down. And thank you. Thank you very much for everybody. If I can get my voice straight, we'll move on to the world's best workforce with Dr. Chad Schmidt and Connie Garland Squire.
Did I have my mic off?
Sorry. Yeah, I got my, my apologies. Good evening, Chair McClellan and board members, Superintendent Webb and community of South St. Paul. I am here, my name is Chad Schmidt and I'm the Director of Learning. And I'm here with my partner, Connie Garland Squire, the Director of Early Learning and Equity. And tonight, we're going to provide a brief report on the world's best workforce and the achievement and integration plans. I am sharing my screen here now, so you can see this. Connie and I have a few slides that we'll use to, to talk through this work. Know that this is an annual report that gets submitted to the Minnesota Department of Education. And a few years ago, they combined the achievement and integration report with the world's best workforce report. So that's why they're both coming to you tonight together. And this is a report on work that happened in the 1920 school year. So the one that started as a normal and typical school year and the one that ended in full-time distance learning as a part of the COVID pandemic. So, so we're going to give a brief update. Many of these, so just a bit of a foreshadowing, many of the goals in these two plans are measured with results from the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments. And those assessments were not administered this past spring. And therefore, many of these results were, were unable to report on many of the, the results from many of these goals. So I want to give you that as context as well. Okay. So I am going to get started here. Connie will, she'll have a couple of slides and then I'll talk some more and then she'll finish it up for us. So the background information is that the world's best workforce and, and achievement integration plans are rooted in our school district strategic plan and roadmap. And that tonight, you're getting a brief, a brief update and an annual report on those two plans. The strategic plan, as you know, is based on our mission, which is to ignite a passion in every learner, to inquire, continuously improve and engage in positively changing our world. We also have five vision statements that are oftentimes summarized with one, prepare each and every learner for their next step. And then we also have five strategic directions. So that this package is our strategic roadmap or our strategic plan. And the world's best workforce and achievement and integration are in, in part specific goals that are aligned to trying to move this strategic plan forward. Or you might say it the other way. The strategic plan is trying to move our district forward in a way that supports and enhances the achievement and integration and the world's best workforce plans. So world's best workforce has five particular areas. And the aim of the world's best workforce plan is to increase student performance and address the following five goal areas. One, all children are ready for school. Number two, all third graders can read at grade level. Number three, all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. Number four, all students are ready for career in college. And number five, all students graduate from high school. So when this legislation was first passed in 2013, it was about improving outcomes for students and doing it in some strategic areas. So, so to be focused on these areas. Now Connie will talk for a few minutes about the, the background information around achievement and integration plans.
Thank you Chad and good evening everyone. Again, I'm Connie Garland Squire. I'm Director of Early Learning and Equity for the South St. Paul Schools and I'm proud to be part of the, of this opportunity to really tie together achievement and integration with regard to our progress toward our ultimate goals for our school district. Achievement and integration allow us to focus on our pursuit of racial and economic integration for our students, increase student achievement, creating that equitable education and opportunities for our kids and reducing the academic disparities. Now, what you just heard are really, really similar things to what the outcomes and goals are for the world's best workforce. So achievement integration and world's best are tied together in this report because we're walking the same path with the same goal in mind. The achievement and integration structure for the state is that every three years we build a new plan and each year we report on our goals. So this report is actually the culmination of a three-year plan. It was from 2017 to 2020. And simply there is an achievement goal and an integration goal that typically are tied to the assessments that Chad was talking about earlier. But we will go ahead and report on progress toward those goals. We'll hand it back to Chad.
Thank you Connie. So the first area under world's best workforce is all children are ready for school. Also summarized as kindergarten readiness. So, so in each area, we have a measurable goal. It's specific, it's time-bound, it has results in it. I'm not going to spend time in this presentation tonight to go through each, each of the five goals, but I want you to know that we have a measurable goal in each of the five areas. And as I said, in many of them, we're unable to report because of MCAs. Now however, this one on kindergarten readiness, we can report on. And, and this is about students coming into kindergarten ready to learn. And what you can see here by our results is that 60% of South St. Paul kindergarten students were at or above grade level expectations at the beginning of their kindergarten year for the 2019-20 school year. This is a terrific, a terrific measure. And if you read in the goal statement, you'll see that we were looking at something around the 43% mark. So to, to jump all the way to 60% speaks to the very strong early learning program that we have in South St. Paul. And so we have voluntary preschool and Connie can talk more about what's happened to it since the pandemic. But, but really what's important is that we've got a very strong foundation and a high level of participation in voluntary preschool. We also have a strong early childhood family education program that partners with our preschool programming to support, provide integrated supports for all learners and families. And a key part of some of the work that Connie's moved forward with early learning has been the academic and social emotional learning curriculum that she has helped implement. She, she has helped guide the teachers who have done the implementation, the hard work of making sure that's in place for our students and helping them be successful. The second goal area is reading well by third grade. And this is one of those goals that's measured by MCAs, so we're unable to report on it. However, there are some things we can talk about that we have been doing good work in. The foundational skills that help a student become a proficient reader are things that we've identified and have built in the format of a ladder. Our district-wide implementation of a multi-tiered systems of support, which you have heard me and others talk about before. And this is one of those strategies that really intersects across many of these goal areas. But by, by implementing a framework where we recognize, we identify the needs of each and every learner and then we have the academic and social emotional supports for them. This, this is one area that that benefits from. And then thirdly, one of the progress areas that we've made strides in is the implementation of class-wide interventions and both small group and individual interventions. The third goal area is about closing achievement gaps. You can see this is a long, a long-winded goal and, and what it does is, is it says that our students of color and our students whose families qualify for free and reduced price meals will achieve at, they will make significant gains. And our students who tend to be on the higher end of the achievement gap, so our white students will not, we're not going to close the achievement gap by some students doing worse and some students doing better. We want all students to gain and we want our students who have been performing lower to, to have significant gains. So that's, that's what this closing gaps goal is about. And some of the significant work we've been doing here are about our standards mastery work that we've been engaged in for a couple of years. The Innocent Classroom BAR and EOS programs that we've been implementing. Some of them as far back as three years ago and some of them more recently. So Innocent Classroom about finding the good and developing a strong relationship with each student so that they can be successful in school. The Building Assets Reducing Risks Program has been implemented at grade nine for a couple of years. That has been targeted at making sure we catch students soon, early and provide interventions to help them be successful and stay on track towards graduation. And the Equal Opportunity Schools Program has been about trying to increase the participation in all of our diploma program classes so that it's representation, representative of our student body. We also have had an academic and social emotional learning focus that is a program, not a program, it's a strategy that will help improve learning for all students. Again, multi-tiered systems of support. And then finally, last spring, our middle school was starting a pilot of literacy intervention strategies that we saw some benefits from. And then with our distance, with our forced move to distance learning, we didn't get to measure it as significantly as we wanted to, but it was, it's a positive and something that Leah is trying to work with moving forward in the middle school this year. Fourth goal area is around career and college ready. And so we measure this with eighth grade math, knowing that that's a gateway into upper level math and science courses. And again, we're unable to report because of the MCAs. Some, some areas of strength, you heard a couple of them in terms of, you heard one of them in terms of standards mastery. I'd also like to highlight the curriculum review processes that we basically completed at the elementary school and that we are a little more than halfway through at the secondary level. In 2019-20, that was our first year of implementing new math curriculum materials that we see as part of our K-12 continuum that will strengthen this area. And then our numerous tri-district college and career readiness programs that we have seen success with our students being highly engaged in school and gaining some career, career experiences and career knowledge by participating in those programs. The fifth area is around high school graduation. This is one of those lagging goals because the data is about a year behind. So we had a goal of moving from 81% of all ninth graders who start with us graduating within four years. And what you see here is that we did not meet this goal. We actually slipped. And district-wise slipped back to 74% of students who started with us in ninth grade who graduated four years later. What is some of the progress we make in those areas? You heard me mention BAR before. That has a specific outcome, a specific intended outcome of increasing graduation rates. So we know that's an area and we have some preliminary data that is showing us some success in that area. So when we look ahead to the results that will be coming for the class of 2020, we are, we are looking forward to seeing that. Our multi-tiered systems of support is a district-wide program that helps keep students on track for graduating. Part of that is monitoring credits earned, but it's also having success in school, both academically and socially emotionally. And then finally, our strength in our counseling and academic advising program that has, that we've been able to build up over the last four or five years and get to a place where we have some, some strength and some consistency in the advising that we can provide students as they are finishing their high school careers and looking forward towards post-secondary. So those are the five goal areas of world's best workforce and a, and a quick report of progress on those. Connie has two goal areas from achievement and integrations. I'll pass it to her.
Thanks Chad. And yep, you can roll on to the next slide there. Like I mentioned earlier, we have an achievement goal and an integration goal. Our achievement goal is simply that our reading achievement is going to increase. And as Chad has been reporting, this year we were unable to report on that specific goal. But our progress toward such goals is going to sound repetitive. So what, what I hope you notice about our goal setting and about the work that we're doing across the district is that it is systematic, systemic across our schools. The work in standards alignment, the work in the multi-tiered systems of support, the work that we are all doing in supporting the social and emotional learning of our kids and helping to break down barriers so that all families can see school as the most important thing. What particularly about achievement and integration is that our culturally asons and our family support workers come into the system through this kind of work. So that we have an extra line of, a support network for our families for whom school can't be the top thing to worry about every day. And so we're trying to reduce those barriers. And you know, we've been doing things including food security and, and other kinds of outreach and wraparound services starting at birth. So we, we know we are making progress. We intend to affect that academic goal with this kind of change. Thanks Chad. The second one, the second goal for achievement and integration is an integration goal. And that means giving our kids more opportunities to have experiences with other kids from other school districts, other backgrounds, other points of view. What we are able to do and what we have been very successful doing is building the leadership capacity of our kids from within the system so that their voices are heard and are strong as they participate in other cross-district leadership opportunities. So our affinity groups are dynamite and the opportunities that our kids have through those groups are supported through achievement and integration. You may, may recognize that we have students in the Indigenous Leader Circle who are American Indian kids that cross district and meet together as a leadership group. And as Chair McClellan was mentioning earlier, we have students that have been very active in leadership and the board through the Equity Alliance YEB, that's Student Leadership Group and participating in the board, on the board at Equity Alliance. And so the kinds of opportunities our kids are having so that social justice and that equity voice is clear and strong continue to expand. What, what you will also be seeing in the future is that we are pushing to expand these opportunities for younger and younger kids and not just our high schoolers. So our growth effort is more inclusive and more inclusive of even younger kids.
Thank you Connie. So Board Members, that brings us to the close of our presentation. Again, this is strategic directions and initiatives to move forward with our strategic plan, our district strategic plan. And it is connected through the world's best workforce and the achievement and integration plans. Do you have any questions for Connie or I?
Go ahead Patty.
Yep, thank you for all your work. I'm, I'm especially proud of the work that has been done in the area of equity for our students and taking the time and the, and the intention and the progress. And I know it, it doesn't move as quickly as all of us want it to move, but just the work that you're doing, I think South St. Paul School District can be very, and the, and the the city itself can be very proud of that work. One question I have though, did COVID significantly impact that graduation percentage?
So thank you for that question Patty. Unfortunately, we, so this was the class of 2019, not the class of 2020. So it's a whole year old. And so we can say, I, I think the answer to your question is no, because we didn't have COVID yet by spring of 2019. But we are anxiously awaiting the, the numbers from our class of 2020. And it, and just to provide a little context for the board and the community, the graduation rate is complicated by, it starts with every ninth, every enrolled ninth grader. And then it tries to track them as individuals. Where do they get to four years later? Some are still in our school district and school community. And so those are the easy ones. It's the students who might move. It's the students who might choose a different school. It's the students who might need additional, a little additional time to earn enough credits to graduate from high school. So that's, that's the stuff that's composed in that graduation rate calculation.
So a follow-up question. So potentially if we have students moving in and out of the district, that will impact or lower the percentage of graduation? Or is that, is there a formula that you use to figure that out?
Yeah, it's, and it's, and it's, it's actually a formula that we can't replicate at the local level because we don't have, we know who we're serving right now, but we don't necessarily know the students who are still coming to us that haven't showed up yet at our door. So, so our aim, which is true with every student, is to take them where they're at today and say, what are the next steps that will help you on this path towards high school graduation? And, and provide the resources and the supports to help each student get towards that goal.
Okay. All right. Thank you Chad. Thank you Connie.
Anybody else for Chad or Connie? Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
Next up is 2022-2023 Calendar Guiding Change Document. Dr. Schmidt?
And Jeff, Jeff, can I just interrupt for one second? Just want to be sensitive to our 7:15. I just wanted, just do a quick time check. We're about 10 to seven right now. So, so we still have audit and a number of agenda items too. So it's your call and we're okay either way, but I just wanted to check in.
Yeah, I'm keeping an eye on it and if we have to, we can flip flop. Okay, go ahead Chad.
Okay. Lisa, I don't know if this is you presenting or if this is me presenting, but I'll, I'll start talking here for a second and then I can present quickly if I need to. So Board Members, you may remember that last school year, we adopted both a 2021 and a 2122 school calendar. So we have two years' worth of calendars done. So this is starting the work for a 2223 calendar. The benefit of having two calendars out there is our families can predict what school is going to look like a couple of years out. Our school system can predict what school is going to look like a couple of years out. And so what, what I'm asking for here with this guiding change is for you to review it tonight. And then I'll be coming back in January asking for the board to approve it so that we can work on the details of the calendar. The guiding change process is one of basically defining the sandbox. And so as a board, what, what we have here is a document that clarifies what are the intended results? What's the current reality and what are the unacceptable means? So what's the, what's the do not play territory? And by getting this to an eventual agreement, what you'll allow is the, the school district administrators to work in partnership with other school district groups to develop a calendar that we can bring back to you for ultimate approval. So what's in this guiding change document and what you can see on the screen there is that, I'll start with the results column, that we develop recommendations for a 2223 school district calendar that has consistent start and end days for all schools, includes a minimum of 170 student contact days and 185 days for continuing contract teachers. and 185 days for continuing contract teachers. It priator prioritizes student family connections uh as opportunities to improve proactive communication and partnership with our families. Uh, creates collaborative learning opportunities throughout the school year as part of the professional learning schedule. It attempts to maximize instructional days earlier in the school year uh in terms of scheduling for parent teacher conferences and identifying winter and spring breaks. It includes a near equal number of days in each term. So at the secondary level, that means uh trimesters, so a, a near equal number of days in try one, try two, and try three. And at the elementary level, that means an equal number of days in semester one and semester two. Uh, it includes a minimum of two extra days in case of emergency closings. Uh, it aligns targeted ser- targeted learning services for students in the summer months. And it articulates the district holidays and the secondary commi- the high school commencement. So what uh, what you see in the rest of this document, it just gives some context about uh where have we been? And so that's that middle column of current reality. And then on the right-hand side, you see unacceptable means, which is to say um, you will not approve a calendar if it doesn't fit inside these parameters. So the calendar uh can't violate district policy or work agreements or state statute, and that includes the minimum number of hours for each level of student. Uh, the calendar can't exceed available budget parameters or limits. It can't uh develop recommendations that negatively impact learning. Uh, it must, it can't demit- uh, it, we can't develop recommendations that do not demonstrate best practices at a regional or national level. And uh, finally, uh, don't come back with a calendar that develops recommendations that are insensitive to the representative cultures of our community. So, so with this, uh, this is a board tool or a board document to um provide guidance and direction to develop a calendar. Uh, page two is about uh pa- uh student family connections, uh what we have uh used, we used to call parent teacher conferences. And so it just provides guidelines around that. This is something that you also approved as an addendum to last year's guiding change document. So, so the, the questions, uh, so what I'm wondering about, are there any questions you have about this guiding change document? Are there any of the um, uh, uh, of the results that uh you would like to see changed? Um, before we go to work on developing some calendars and ultimately bringing one back uh to the board for uh, for approval uh sometime this coming spring?
Linda, go ahead.
Hi Chad, um, the last, the last time we rolled this out, there were some concerns from the elementary school teachers about the um, uh, connection, the connection night. And um, I, I think the workaround at that time was that each school could do something that fit for, for that community. Is that still gonna happen this round?
Um, so, so one of the concerns that I remember is that um, uh, because each school was allowed to develop their own calendar, it became um complicated for both staff and for families. And so um, what had hap- what has happened with the, the two existing calendars is uh, the nights or the evenings for those uh student family connections got put on the calendar. So it, it provided a little bit more structure around it. And um, and yet uh, each school can kind of decide, uh, you know, is it from four to eight? Or is it a little different schedule? And um, the big package is 12 hours of time in first semester and 12 hours of time in second semester to develop those uh strong connections with families.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else have any questions for Chad? Okay, thank you Chad.
Thank you. So board, I'll bring this back in January uh to seek your approval so that we can get going on the 2223 calendar. Thank you.
Um, next is public listening session. Dr. Webb.
Thanks Jeff. So we had one submission about a week ago uh from a community member that just was concerned about uh taxes and tax rates. And so um, we uh called and just are waiting for a call back from that individual. Uh, so we will continue to keep the conversation rolling. As Aaron Bushburger, our finance director, rolls forward with all of our tax overview, I think it'll be very informational for everyone in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you Dave. Um, next is a consent item. I'm looking for a motion to approve financial claims and staffing. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Lisa, would you take the role?
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorklund?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lalabertie?
Yes.
And Chair McClellan?
Yes.
Kevin Yates?
That is approved. We have no policy. Um, I'm gonna ask Aaron Bushburger a question. Can you do Central Square in 15 minutes? And we'll, we'll, we'll push the audit down after the levy.
Jeff, uh, my only concern is we've got Aaron Nielsen, our auditor here.
Okay.
So he's, he's kind of been on standby here.
Alright. We can do it in 15 minutes.
Um, yeah, we could probably, should we push Central Square after?
Yes.
Central Square.
Okay. Alright, then I'm looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the June 30th, 2020 financial statements and management report. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Dr. Webb, would you take this one?
Yeah, sure will. So tonight we are fortunate to have uh Aaron Nielsen and Aaron Bushburger. Uh, you know, two Aarons that are doing an incredible job in finance. And uh, per state requirement, we do a yearly audit. So I'm gonna let them take it away. And uh, again, this is our school audit or 1920, so just our previous school year. And we're sharing all of our results tonight. Aaron?
Thank you Superintendent Webb and School Board. Uh, as Dave mentioned, Aaron Nielsen, uh, our partner in charge of our independent audit is here. Um, uh, typically what we would do if we were in person is I would kind of go through the audit report with you uh, and then turn it over to Aaron uh to talk about kind of the audit results and a little bit uh bigger picture information. So uh, our compromise here tonight is uh, I have a brief PowerPoint uh to go through uh, that will review the budget to actual variances uh and review the ending fund balances for the four funds you see here. Um, and then I'll turn it over to Aaron uh, and he has some comments to make just about uh, kind of the overall uh status of the audit. So um, I'll just get started here. Uh, before I jump in, I will mention, and, and I think Aaron will too uh during his presentation, but uh, we did receive a uh quote-unquote clean audit opinion. So that's uh always good news to have uh as a part of our annual audit. Uh, Lisa, if you wanna go ahead and start here, uh, so uh reviewing uh the budget to actual variance. Uh, so this will be kind of some consistent information. So the column you see is the budget. So you can see uh that we were budgeting uh a deficit of about $3.5 million. There at the bottom, you can see the net change. Uh, the column to the right is what actually happened. So you can see uh, we actually came in with a deficit of $2.4 million. Uh, and then on the far right-hand column is the variance. So we came in about uh $1 million better uh than what we had budgeted. So obviously, uh, as we're aware, as we went through, throughout the year, uh, obviously a challenging financial year for us. Uh, however, some good news at the end of this is uh, we did come in uh a little bit better than what we uh had originally planned. And so you can see um, on the revenue, uh, we came in on the far right-hand column, uh, we came in $474,000 over uh what we budgeted. Uh, and on the expenditures, uh, we came in about $627,000 under budget. So uh, overall, uh, some good news here at the end of the year. The next slide uh now shows uh the beginning fund balance, what we started the year with. You can see the $8.4 million there in the top line. Uh, the net change, which I just talked about, we have a deficit of 2.4 million, leaving ending fund balance of uh just under $6 million. Bottom there shows the fund balance percentages. So the fund balance, uh, according to our policy, we are at 11.6% uh, so just under the 12% that we have in policy. Uh, we have an additional 1.1% in, in other fund balances. Uh, so 10% fund balance uh in the general fund. So again, uh, a little bit better uh than what we originally had planned. Moving on to the food service fund, so the similar kind of setup here in presentation. Uh, the first column, we were budgeting a deficit of $171,000. The actual came in at a deficit of $200,000 uh or a variance of about $31,000. So pretty close to what we had budgeted. Uh, and that uh, in my opinion, is good news uh considering uh in March, we completely changed our, our food service program um to start uh obviously distributing meals at the buildings, delivering meals on school buses. So um, overall, from a financial perspective, I think uh we ended in a really good spot uh given the circumstances that we faced there. Uh, the next slide shows uh then the ending fund balance for the food service fund. Uh, so you can see we have an ending fund balance of $657,171. Uh, that's about 29% of our annual uh expenditures. And so federal guidelines uh actually uh require us to be below 33%. Uh, so you can see we meet that criteria. Going forward, uh, we do know, obviously, we have some challenges um financially in food service uh that we will uh need to continue to address as well. The next uh set of information is our community education fund. Again, I'll kind of go through the same uh kind of information. So we did budget a deficit of $37,000. Uh, in the next column, the actual, we came in at a deficit of 6,000. So about $30,000 better uh than what we had budgeted. I will make a note here, uh, we did contribute $100,000 from the general fund in the community education fund to keep the fund balance uh in the black. Uh, again, another uh challenging uh, kind of few months uh after the pandemic. That had from a financial perspective, the community education fund uh couldn't offer their typical programming, uh, including their uh Kids' Choice Program. And so obviously that had uh a financial impact on the community education fund. Um, and then uh, this just shows the fund balance. As I mentioned, uh, we did uh contribute $100,000 from the general fund. Uh, so that overall fund balance is $134,000. Again, uh, a quick note about the community education fund. So really, we have four different buckets here. Adult basic education, school readiness, preschool, and then all of community ed programming. So there's different fund get balance components uh that kind of make up this total uh community education fund balance. And then finally, I'd just like to uh point out uh on the next slide, the self-insurance funds. Uh, so the first column is our dental self-insurance fund. Uh, so we had contributions uh or revenue in the amount of $327,000, expenditures of $255,000, uh leaving us with a surplus for the year of $71,000 in the dental self-insurance fund. The next column is the medical uh self-insurance fund. Uh, so revenue there was approximately $7.3 million. And again, this revenue is coming from our other funds uh in the form of uh health insurance contributions. The expenditures were approximately $5.4 million. And then you can see there at the bottom, the net change uh was uh approximately $1.9 million surplus uh going into the self-insurance fund. Lisa, if you wanna go the, the next slide here. So this will show uh kind of the fund balance or net position of our self-insurance funds. So you can see uh the dental, uh, we ended up with about $187,000 uh in assets there in uh net position. Uh, and so that equates to about 73% of our operating expenditures for the year. So uh, a good, healthy uh reserve there in the dental uh fund. On the right-hand side is the medical fund. Uh, so you can see uh that net position uh is now uh just over $4 million. Uh, so uh, um, that's about uh 74% in fund balance, uh, 74% of annual uh costs for the year in fund balance. So again, uh, healthy uh reserve there that we continue to build up uh over time. I will make uh a quick comment about the self-insurance fund. So we did see, uh, obviously, we were trending uh in the right direction all year. Uh, obviously, when the pandemic had, uh, that completely changed uh our dental and medical uh self-insurance costs. Uh, obviously, we saw less costs uh over the course of April, May, and June. Uh, and so financially, in the short term, that had a positive impact for us. However, uh, as we know, um, we have some unexpected times ahead uh, ahead of us here, uh especially related to uh medical and other uh insurance costs. And so uh, as kind of, you know, Kathy and I always kind of say, we're, we're obviously keeping a close eye on this uh to ensure that we maintain uh a healthy reserve here going forward. And um, and hopefully this will, this will continue to ben- benefit the district uh going forward into future years as well. So just uh, wanna just make a couple of quick notes about next step. So we'll ask you to approve the audit. Uh, next up, we'll approve the property tax levy. Uh, and then starting in January, uh, again, we'll start our uh annual budget planning process uh for the 2122 school year. So, so that's just my uh quick overview of the finances. Um, I can uh turn it over to uh Aaron and, and he can go through his presentation. And then uh, both Aaron and I would be um more than happy to answer any questions you have at the end of this. So with that, I'll turn it over to Aaron Nielsen from NMCAR.
Great, thanks Aaron. Uh, I know we're limited in time here. So Lisa, you can keep pushing me through the slides here pretty quickly and I'll try to save some time for questions at the end here. So um, we'll move through it. Our role as auditors, as independent auditors of the district, to provide our opinion on the financial statement and then to issue our, issue our reports on internal controls and compliance. Uh, I'll get right to it with the results of our audit. If you wanna move to the next slide, as Aaron mentioned, we have issued what is known as an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. Uh, we've included a paragraph in there emphasizing a new GASB standard that was implemented this past year with GASB 84, uh which changed some of the fiduciary activity reporting. Uh, we had just one finding or one comment to share with you with regard to the limited segregation of duties and uh, not unusual for an organization of your size to have this just caused by the limited number of individuals involved in the financial reporting process. Um, if we move forward, if the next few slides, I'm happy to report everything Aaron has presented previously is matching exactly with my slides. This shows a 10-year history of the financial position. Uh, as Aaron mentioned, there was a planned spend us, spend down this year. So you can see a change with from 19 to 20 with regard to those cash investment balances and then the unrestricted balances. Uh, the early years, you may recall, were impacted by changes in the tax shift as well as the metering of aid payments. Um, but they have been stable for the last few years. And I guess we'll have to see what, what's to come moving forward. The next slide is just a quick table. And Aaron really hit this well with the fund balance percent, uh, that 11.6% that you can see in the unrestricted category. And then the decrease in total fund balances as planned in the budget. Um, my next slide, we showed the enrollment, that adjusted ADM or average daily membership uh for the past 10 years. We do show the change from the past year. The district served approximately 3,289 ADM for 2020, which was a decrease of about 130 or 3.8% from the prior year. And then I have a couple of slides for the general fund. As Aaron mentioned, the overall general fund this past year and the operating results, uh, the total revenues at that $44.8 million coming in very close to budget, about 1.1% over budget and slightly less than the prior year, about nine, nine tenths of 1% less than the prior year. Uh, one other thing we tend to comment on is that concentration of your revenue sources in the general fund coming from the state. Uh, this past year making up almost 80% of the funding for the general fund. When we look at the next slide for expenditures, uh, again, you can see we've got the comparison budget to actual to prior year. Uh, total expenses this past year making totaling about $47.1 million coming in under budget by about 1.5%. And they were about 4.2% over the prior year. Uh, similar to revenues or as I spoke with revenues, that concentration on the expenditure side, uh, the spending is made up primarily of salaries and employee benefits to finance the education of our students or where the spending goes to, um, which is common with all the districts that we work with. For your district, this past year, salary and benefits totaled about 81.6% of the general fund spending. And then I have just a couple more slides. The next one here, as Aaron touched upon with the food. The next one here, as Aaron touched upon with the food service special revenue fund, we've got five years of that fund balance as a year-end. And the same with the community service special revenue funds. Both of these funds have a little, close to $2.2 million of expenditures, so much less in volume of activity as the general fund, but still significant operations for the organization. And you can see that similar break-even results for the community service fund that Aaron shared, and then a spend-down in the food service fund, getting you just under that threshold or getting under that percentage. We talked about the three-months operations using a nine-month schedule where that 33% level comes from. And then my last slide's a little different than what we talked about to this point. So this is the entity-wide presentation, so we consolidate all of the funds for the organization, and we also capture the capital assets as well as the long-term obligations for the organization. Overall, you can see there was a decrease of about $2 million compared to the prior year, largely in that unrestricted category and consistent with what we talked about for the spend-down in the general fund. And then also impacted by the change in pension obligations for the statewide pension plans of PRA and TRA. So with that, I know I was tongue-twisting pretty quickly there, but I wanted to make sure we got you to your truth in taxation on time. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for Aaron or Aaron? It doesn't look like yet. Thank you very much, Aaron, for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I know Aaron had a chance to meet with the finance committee, so I know you've gotten a chance to look through this in more detail. And I also want to thank your staff. It definitely was a challenging year with the audit, working remotely and onsite and going along with everybody else working through this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Aaron. Are there any other further, oh, you have something to say, Aaron? Okay. Any further discussion? Lisa, will you take the role, please?
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt? Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorklund?
Yeah.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
At seven yeas?
Thank you. That is approved. We're going to flip-flop B and C on the agenda and go to the...
Jeff, I just had some inside coaching here from our finance director. We wanted to be sensitive to any community member that was in attendance tonight to be on track for 7:15. And he and the, it would be just fine if we did Central Square next, and then go right into our levy right after that. So he thinks Central Square will be brief.
Okay, we'll do that then. I'm looking for the approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2021 Central Square operating budget. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Aaron, take it away.
All right, thank you, Chairman McClellan and School Board members. I have Gene Zender here with me tonight, our community education director. So typically, what has happened in the past with the Central Square budget, so this would actually be brought before the School Board, typically in the fall sometime, to get approval of the budget for the next calendar year. However, with all of the going on with the pandemic, we are bringing this to you just a little bit later than we otherwise normally would. But this Central Square budget typically has been approved by the board in the past. I will say for the Plan 2021 budget, this has been approved by the city council at their last Monday city council meeting, and then has also been approved by the Central Square Board at their November 5, 2020 meeting as well. I'm just going to make a couple of brief comments about it. Really, we know that the Central Square in general is really focused tonight at kind of more of a little bit more procedural in approving the budget going forward. So this is the city finance staff and administrative staff put this budget document together, so we are sharing it with you tonight. A couple of quick comments. And so they have updated kind of the year-to-date numbers for 2020. I will say these are, you know, always subject to change. However, they are projecting right now an estimated between $40,000 and $50,000 deficit
It looks like we lost Aaron. Oh, we're back.
Okay.
He lost you for a minute there.
Okay. Maybe I'll try to back up 15 seconds. So the 2021 budget that you have in your packet tonight is planning for an approximate $13,000 deficit. And the budget that the city staff has put together is a budget for six months. So this budget goes through June of 2021, given kind of the uncertainty that we have going on around Central Square right now. So I just wanted to point those couple things to you. Dollars, I'll call it generally in the fund balance right now. However, the deficits going forward will obviously impact that fund balance. So again, this is a little bit more procedural, but just asking for your approval of the budget tonight. Both Gene and I are available if you have any questions about the budget.
Any questions for Aaron or Gene? Okay, thank you very much, Aaron. Any further discussion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorklund?
Yeah.
That's Chair McClellan?
Yes.
At seven yeas?
Thank you. That is approved. Next is the approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the payable 2021 levy at $11,070. I'm just, you're going to say the figure there, Aaron. I'm not going to do that. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Aaron, take it away.
Well, Jeff, I'm on the spot now. Holy cow. We are asking for your approval of the payable 2021 levy. This is something that we do every year. We are required to have a public hearing. So both Superintendent Webb and I are currently at the city council chambers right now, just in case if anyone would like to give their feedback on this. I will make another note that there was an online opportunity that we always offer our community to provide input as well. And as Superintendent Webb mentioned, we just had that one piece of input, one piece of feedback there. So I will be going through a PowerPoint presentation. We are required by law to present certain information. So we'll just give a brief funding overview. We are required to speak to our district budget, speak to the levy in more specifics as far as why the levy is changing, and then allow for public comment at the end if anyone would like to do so. So just a little bit about school district funding overview. You know, all of you have been on the board for a number of years, so you're all familiar with this. And so a lot of what I say here is it will be pretty familiar to you and is important that the community hears some of this information as well. So as we're aware, we do receive our funding, the majority of our funding through the state of Minnesota. Almost 80% of our funding does come from the state, and that funding is really highly regulated. It's dependent on state formulas. It's dependent on state statutes around tax policy. And then it also revolves around our authorized property tax levy. And so the state authorizes boards to submit referendums for operating capital needs for two voters for approval. Some of the funding challenges that we face, so general education funding is the primary funding source for the school district. As we've talked about many times, that funding has not kept pace with inflation. At this point in time, that funding level would have to increase by over $500 per student just to have kept up with inflation over the course of about the past 20 years. Another important funding source for us is special education revenue. We are currently about 40% underfunded in our special education programming, which equates to over $800 million statewide. So another important funding source that unfortunately, we could use more of. And then finally, due to kind of those factors of funding not keeping up with inflation and with our costs, there's a growing reliance on voter-approved operating referenda. And so we've talked about that many times as well, that there are growing equities between Minnesota school districts based on what those communities can afford for their school district. So just a little bit more on the next slide, Lisa. So the tax levy is based on different state-determined formulas plus any voter-approved referenda. Some increases that we're going to talk about tonight in the tax levies are really revenue-neutral, which means they're offset by reductions in state aid. And you'll see this word "equalization" in here a few different times. That's really, this year is kind of the prime example that it's really having an impact on South St. Paul and our taxpayers. So as we get to the levy presentation, I'll make points about certain levies going up. However, just know for those categories, the state funding is going down, so we're not necessarily generating any more revenue. All right, Lisa, the next slide. So we'll get into our school district budget a little bit here, and obviously, the board is familiar with that. We establish budgets for four different funds: general fund, food service, community service, and debt service funds. So the next slide shows our total funds. You can see all the funds listed there at the bottom. We have revenues of $51,85,547, expenditures of $52,344,825. And so we are, as you know, planning to deficit spend, and existing fund balances will cover any difference between revenues and expenditures. So we'll just zero in on, the largest fund we have is our general fund. So as I mentioned, you can see there in the red, the state provides 79% of our overall funding. In the blue, property taxes is 16%, so another really important component of our funding. Federal in the green is approximately 3%, and then other, which includes fees and interest revenue, is about 2% of our total revenue. Then on the expenditure side, on the next slide, in the green is our instructions. You can see two-thirds of our dollars that we spend go straight towards the instruction of our students. In the purple on the left is student support services. And so that includes instructional support services, student support services, pupil support services. So you can see that that's approximately 16%. And then sites and buildings at 10%, administration is 3% in the blue, and then district support services in the red is 5%. So speaking to a little bit more details around our upcoming levy here, so we can levy in different categories. They show up on tax statements as voter-approved levies and other local levies. And we work with the Department of Education to calculate these levy limits for all districts in the state of Minnesota. So the next slide shows that we've been working on this process since September. If you recall back in September, the board authorized a proposed levy. And then that gets used, and proposed property tax statements get mailed to our district property taxpayers in November. And then we're here tonight for the public hearing and asking the board to certify the final levy amount. So the next slide shows the comparison between last year's levy and this year's levy. So you can see last year's levy was approximately $10.5 million. We're now at approximately $11 million or a 5.4% change in the levy. And so in these next slides here, I'm going to explain why that levy has changed since last year. So I will mention that many different factors can change your property tax bill from year to year. So in speaking specifically to the school district levy, a change in the value of individual properties can have a really big impact on the amount of change that each individual property taxpayer sees. Changes in total value of all the property in the district will have an impact. And then increases or decreases in specific levy amounts based on funding formulas, local needs, equalization, which I'll talk about again here shortly. But many different factors can cause your property taxes to change from year to year. Now getting into the specifics of certain categories and why those levy amounts are changing. So the first you'll see here is the voter-approved operating referendum and what's known as local optional revenue. So you can see that those two funding categories, the levy increased by $177,390. And what's happening here is all due to equalization. So the district's property value has increased, so that means that share of funding is shifting away from the state. The state is paying less, and which then causes South St. Paul taxpayers... They have to pay more. So like, go for it. The next slide shows the second change, and that is due to the voter-approved capital projects levy. So this is the only levy that we have that is based on the amount of property tax value that we have in South St. Paul. So as I mentioned, that property tax value collectively increased, and so the amount of the capital projects levy has increased based on that as well. The next is our debt service or reduction for debt excess. So you can see that this levy increased by $283,000. And what happens here is, so we're required to levy at 100%, 105% of our payments. And so typically, a balance builds up because we typically collect the majority of our property taxes. So a balance builds up, and then the Department of Education adjusts future levies based on that. And so unfortunately, we saw kind of a big spike during this levy cycle, which caused, I'm sorry, a big spike in our fund balance, which caused this adjustment to be positive. And so that unfortunately has caused our levy to increase by a little bit during this levy cycle. The next slide is really specific to, this is another debt service slide. However, this is a little different reason why I'm explaining this. So our debt service voter-approved levy increased by $609,000. Our debt service OPEB levy, or non-voter-approved, decreased by $728,000. So you can see that we actually had a decrease in our debt service of $118,000. However, the reason I'm pointing this out is because on property tax statements, there's two categories. There's voter-approved, and there's other local levies. And so what our residents are seeing are a significant increase in the voter-approved levy, and I will say either a small decrease or a small increase in the other local levies. And so what's happening here is we're shifting the amount of our debt service payments from the other local levy section up to the voter-approved. And so that's why we'll be seeing kind of that swing there and that shift in the voter-approved levy of portion of the property tax statement. So I hope that kind of generally makes sense, but that's what we experienced during this current year. And I will mention, as I kind of previously did a minute ago, our overall debt service costs here actually went down by a little bit. It's just the category it's in changed. So we like to show kind of a four-year comparison of property taxes. This is on residential homestead property of $100,000. You can see the note, I hope you can see the note on the bottom. It's in kind of small font, but this estimates annual average market changes in that property from year to year. So as you can see, back in 2018, on the far left-hand side, that homeowner paid $381 for school district property taxes. Move all the way to the right now, that homeowner currently pays $417 in school district property taxes. The next slide is the same example. It's just on a $225,000 residential property. We use $225,000 because that's actually the current average... And we use $225,000 because that's actually the current average residential value in South St. Paul. So again, the same comparison on the left-hand side in 2018, four years ago, that property owner paid $1,003. And on the far-right-hand side, that property owner currently pays $1,078 for this current levy. Next, I'll just mention a few programs that we mention every year that I think are important for our community to hear. There are three different property tax refund or deferral programs. The first is the Minnesota homestead credit refund. It's available, obviously, to owners of homestead property. There are income limitations as well. And I will note that this is also available to renters as well. And so they are required to complete a state tax form. And I would encourage anyone who's interested property tax refund program. And so this is available to owners of a homestead property. Lisa, if you want to go to the next slide with that CIA gross tax increase of at least 12% and over $100 over the prior year. So there's some criteria there. And again, they complete the same form. And then third, there is a senior citizen property tax deferral program with some income limitations. I will say, an important note here, it's just a deferral program. It's not, these taxes aren't refunded or forgiven. So the taxes are just deferred into future years as well. So then, and really, next steps is we'll allow for a public comment as necessary, and then we'll ask the board to certify the levy. So with that, that concludes my presentation. We currently don't have anyone in the city council chambers here, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions or discussion with Aaron?
Just while.
Yeah.
And wondering if Aaron would consider a little remedial class for some of us who are more financially challenged. Because, yeah. I mean, that was a lot of information. And I have, you know, for four years, I have heard it. And, you know, it does make more sense than it used to. But I still wouldn't mind if you had some time, Aaron, that we could just maybe pick it apart a little more so I'm more clear on where we stand as a city.
Yeah, absolutely, Nikki. And that offer goes, you know, obviously, for any of the board.
Sure.
And it's hard, you know, I'll say it, you know, this is complicated stuff. And it seems to change every year, which doesn't make it any easier. Nikki, I'll say, we had finance committee last week, too, and there were some of the same puzzled looks. No, you're not alone.
That's good to know.
And if there's things, you know, obviously, we can do to, well, obviously, more than willing to do that.
Thank you.
Nikki, I would suggest joining the finance committee. You'd be amazed how much you would learn.
You know, that's maybe not a bad idea. Thanks for that suggestion.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? If not, Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Bjorkland?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arant?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's seven yeas?
Thank you, that is approved. Next is the approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution designating polling places for the 2021 elections. So I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Lisa, will you read the resolution and feel free to paraphrase because it's a long one?
This is a resolution designating the polling places for the 2021 elections, whereas the Minnesota statute 204B.16 subdivision 1 requires the school district by ordinance or resolution to designate the polling places for the upcoming school year. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board for South St. Paul Public Schools designates the following polling places for elections conducted in 2021: Precinct 1, St. John's Baptist Church; Precinct 2, First Presbyterian Church; Precinct 3, Luther Memorial Church; Precinct 4, Dakota County Museum; and Precinct 5, Concordia Lutheran Church.
Thank you, Lisa. Dr. Webb?
Yep. And are you asking for more color commentary on just on our polling places? Or are you?
Yes.
Again, as Lisa mentioned, just by statute, we are required to make sure that once a year, we just have your approval to not only designate, but to make sure that we're communicating that with our community. And so that's our whole action for tonight, is to make sure that we can not only identify our polling places, but have the latitude to adjust those as needed.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Diaz?
You.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Oops. Inspector Bjorkland?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arant?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
And Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's seven yeas?
Thank you, that is approved. The last resolution tonight is the approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the acceptance of GIFT resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
Dr. Webb, will you give a little background on this?
Yeah, just a shout out to our South St. Paul Lions organization donating over $2,000 to our theater program, just for equipment donation. So thanks to the Lions. And we are the recipient of a grand piano from Jenny Prochnow. So just thank you to Jenny. And our music department is the recipient of that and pianos. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, will you read the resolution?
Be it resolved that the School Board of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District 6, accept the following donations as indicated in the detailed background: a donation amount of $2,045 from the South St. Paul Lions Club to the South St. Paul Theater Department to be used for equipment, and also a Weber grand piano donation to the South St. Paul Secondary Site from Jenny Prochnow to the music department at the secondary building.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Lisa, would you please take the role?
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorkland?
Yeah.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arant?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's seven yeas?
Thank you, that is approved. Next up is a superintendent update. Dr. Webb?
Yeah, we're going to pull up the PowerPoint here and give you our update for the last couple of weeks. So it's our superintendent update for December 14th. We have a handful of highlights from around our school district. So a shout out to Ms. Lasca's 2nd graders. You can see some of their incredible artwork here, but their whole goal was to design maps that could give directions from one point to another and do it now virtually. So we wanted to just give you a taste of a few of those great maps in Kim Lasca's class. A shout out to Ms. Schubert's 1st graders as they're practicing reading and spelling now using a digital whiteboard. So again, all these new tools that not only the teachers are learning, but the students are as well. And a shout out to Ms. Schubert's 1st grade class. We have a shout out for Ms. Amley's students. They finished their PYP unit of inquiry by building a treasure map and then following along on Pete the Cat's pirate adventure. So just a fun, engaging activity for our kids. As you can see, our teachers are becoming and really digitally so creative with our kids. Instead of doing similar things every day, they're bringing in new and creative ideas. So way to go to Ms. Amley's students and Ms. Amley herself. These are a few shots from inside our emergency care program. So you may or may not be aware of this, but every school in the state is required to provide emergency care for first responders' children. And any family that is really out there on the front lines providing service for our community in the pandemic, we are, both of our elementary schools continue to provide daily care. So here's a few shots inside that program. And there's a phone number there that if you are a tier-one provider in our community and you have child care needs, please give us a call so we can support you. We have a shout out to both Chad Schmidt and Teresa Starkman, our director and assistant directors of learning. They were featured at a conference called Learning Forward. And they were one of only 40 teams selected nationally. So just wanted to give them a special shout out. They really gave their presentation on our core work, our core academic driving work to really make our IB program the best. And it's driving through MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. And hats off to both of them, not just for this presentation, but for their incredible leadership work in this area in South St. Paul schools. This is a reminder for parents, I'm sure you've seen this in our newsletters recently, but you can still get a free saliva COVID test. And you can drive up, as for community members, you can drive up at the Inver Grove Heights Armory. Or you can continue to request this by mail. Just one other reminder from Nurse Shawnee, our COVID coordinator, is if you or your family are experiencing COVID during this distance learning time, we ask that you email our COVID coordinator, and we can provide direct support to you from our school district. Thanks. Educational benefits. So we are just doing a final shout out tonight for any family that might not have completed their educational benefits form for South St. Paul schools. And here in our district, we ask all families to complete that form. And then here in the office, we can make the determination whether you qualify or not qualify. But we're asking everyone to make sure that these applications are completed so our school district receives critical government funding. So it's really about making sure that we have the funding support to continue funding all of our paraprofessionals and teachers and custodians and all the rest. So if you haven't done that, I'm going to make one last plea tonight. And this month is our deadline month to get this form in. So we need you to act now. If you haven't already submitted that, you can go right onto our website into this www.schoolcafe.com/soustpaul, or even just call our phone number. We'd be happy to give you some TLC. If you're overwhelmed by the form itself, just call 457-9429. Thank you. We did extend the Walkathon deadline. And just a reminder, for Walkathon participants, 100% of this year's pledges go right straight back into our students' classrooms. So just the deadline's extended, and all the pledges come right back to the students' classroom. So thanks if you are a walker or a donor, keep it up. We wanted to give you the meal delivery schedule. So on Tuesday, December 22nd, we're going to provide a five-day meal box. And then there's no distributions from December 23rd through the 2nd. And then we'll begin our regular meal pickup schedule back on Monday, January 4th. We thought we'd give you a shot up on top of the roof at Capoja. So very few people actually get a chance to go up on the roof at Capoja, and we don't recommend it. But here is the solar panel project that's on the roof at Capoja. And long-term, again, this will be saving our district thousands of dollars by going solar. And it's a great learning experience for our kids there, too. So we thought we'd give you an inside bird's eye look at the solar project at KEC. I think we have just a couple of last announcements. Just a reminder, December 23rd through January 20, January 2nd is our winter break. And then as we wrap up every meeting, we have our meeting materials tree diagram that you can follow if you want to get any of our meeting agendas and minutes. We'll go back to you, Jeff.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Finally, tonight is board members' reports, committee updates, and where have you seen a passion? Well, we'll start with Bill.
I guess I haven't seen any passions because I haven't been out of the house. But I just want to wish everybody a happy holidays, stay safe and healthy, and maybe reach out to somebody who's sitting there alone, wondering how we're going to get through this, because we will get through it. And that's it. Thanks, Jeff. And thank you and Patty.
Thank you. Chris?
One last chance to say thank you and we wish you well to Patty and to Jeff to tell John and Monica that we're looking forward to working with them, starting with the next meeting. And then just to wish everyone within earshot a happy holiday break. And hopefully, it's a chance to just rest a little bit and recharge and come back at it in January.
Thank you, Chris. Wendy?
Yeah, I'd like to say, as I serve as our member to Intermediate District 917, we also had our audit meeting this month. And I'd like to say, Intermediate 917 came out with an excellent report. And they also work with MMKR as our district does. So, you know, thank you to Nicole Roush, who is our head financial person down at 917. And then also, as everyone has said so far, a real thank you to Patty and Jeff. We look forward to still being your friends, seeing you in town, and look forward to also getting together with Monica and John and working with them. And everyone, have a safe, enjoyable holiday, and we will see you next year.
Thank you, Wendy. Nikki?
We just finished remodeling our kitchen, which I imagine most of you really don't care about. But the reason I'm bringing it up is because for six or seven weeks, we had carpenters, plumbers, electricians, drywallers, all these folks in and out of our house. And I found myself watching them and watching them work and seeing the intelligence in their hands, seeing them creatively problem-solve when something didn't match up or, you know, the wall was, one wall was shorter than the other or whatever, how they worked together and came up with ideas. I mean, they're so gifted in what they do. And I'm just going to put in another plug that we keep our career pathways program strong so that young people, because we don't have shop anymore, and not everybody's college-bound, and that's okay. So I just want to, let's keep that program strong because these younger generation are just doing beautiful work. So, and a Merry Christmas to you all. So, and a Merry Christmas to you all and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Nikki. I totally agree. As a former carpet layer, I know what it's like. Thank you. And Linda?
I echo what everybody's saying and happy holidays to everybody. This is not goodbye to Patty and Jeff, but farewell for now. And can't wait to hear where your life journey is going to take you. So but for the rest of South St. Paul, I hope you have a great winter break. We'll see you in January.
Thank you, Linda. And finally, Patty.
Just to reiterate a fond farewell to my colleagues on the school board, South St. Paul Schools pool board. I have so enjoyed working with the administrative team, top notch. Our teachers, our staff, our paras, our cooks from the custodial staff, everyone. I've just been so proud to claim the role as a school board member because I know South St. Paul is so invested and dedicated to make it the best it can be, the school. And I do want to take a moment to say a fond farewell. To the city of South St. Paul, we've lived here for 25 years. And now we're going up north to live. And we, my, and I leave with you, my son and his wife Sarah, to take care of. They bought a house in South St. Paul. So you haven't gotten totally rid of all the Bjorklands, but thank you and Godspeed.
Thank you, Patty. I agree with everything you say. It was a pleasure serving with you all. With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve, I mean to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Lisa, will you take the role, please?
Inspector Arant?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorkland?
Yeah.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
And Chair McClellan?
Yes, we are adjourned.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Have a good night.
Thank you, guys.
Bye.
Thanks, everyone.
Yes. Good night.
Happy New Year.